Go ahead.
Good evening again, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Englewood Cliffs Mayor and Council. Today is December 9th, 2020. It is 8:46 PM to call the meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. This is our last regular meeting of the year. And it's virtual, so you can participate by Zoom. I encourage and wish and hope that the council will turn their cameras on so the public can see you after all. You wanted to be seen when you ran for office, let them see you now, okay? Turn on your cameras, please.
We already have it on. What's the point of saying that again, Mayor? You're being political.
No, I'm not, actually. Mr. Versa.
Yes, you are. I have my camera on. You can see me.
Well, that's great. I see you, but Mr. Versa's is not on. And then, just as a matter of housekeeping, I call to your attention that Councilman Song resigned on Saturday unexpectedly. So.
Can I comment on that since you brought it up?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Mr. Song did resign, and it wasn't abruptly. It was because of the way he's been treated by you and your verbal abuse. And the residents who went to his home and literally picketed outside, scaring his children and his family, having to ask them to move to the corner of Sylvan Avenue. Being a volunteer on this council under your control is unbelievable. I don't know how anybody withstands it. I know it takes everything I have not to. And you know what? I don't blame Jimmy. It is a thankless job, and the members of this community that chose to show up at his house are the ones who caused him to resign.
Okay, so, look, I've never abused anyone verbally. I've never instructed anyone.
I can give you a whole slew of emails.
And if you feel that you're uncomfortable doing this, feel free to resign as well. I think the public would actually appreciate you resigning as well. Given all the bad votes that you made over the last two years and bad decisions.
No, they actually were not bad decisions. I did the right.
Decisions, you're right. They weren't bad. They were terrible.
No, they weren't terrible.
There might be more to it, but we'll find out.
And the council will realize that eventually. This town will realize eventually that this was the right.
They will read. No, they don't have to notice this in the future. They know that you destroyed this town.
No, they're gonna know that you lied to them from the beginning.
Absolutely not.
Mario, stop harassing the council members, okay?
You know, I had a beautiful plan for affordable.
You had a beautiful plan. You know what? Your plan was to point fingers at everyone else except for you, okay? Take accountability. Let me tell you something, Mario, or King Krajec. Starting January 1st, let me speak. Starting January 1st, you will no longer have anyone else to blame, okay? For anything that happens in this town. So it's about time that you take accountability. Stop pointing fingers at people from the prior administration. You've been in that seat, Mayor. You've been in that seat for four, five years, okay? No more blaming other people, okay? Take accountability.
Laura, you've been here for 10 years on council.
I'm not the mayor. I've never been the mayor. You have been the mayor for five years, okay?
You have the majority.
You don't have the floor.
You made the votes to settle terribly with the affordable housing people. You made the votes to reward a corrupt police chief or former chief. You did that, not me, okay?
You know what? It's all about, you're all about pointing fingers at other people. Starting January 1st, Mario Krajec, listen. You don't have anyone else to blame except for you and your council members. So good luck to you and good luck to the town.
Laura, I promise you, I will clean up your mess next year as well.
It's not my mess. It's been your mess for the past five years. Take accountability, okay? Mario.
You controlled the council for a lot of.
Up to it. You're the mayor. You're the King Mario Krajec, starting January 1st. Take accountability, okay?
Are you finished?
I'm done.
Let's go full public disclosure here, right? Five years, you've been controlling this for the last two years, and in the last two years, you destroyed this town, okay?
Mario.
Mayor, let me finish. My first year as mayor, we had the first tax cut.
The corporate.
Mario, since you've been the mayor of this town, the taxes have not gone down, okay?
That's because you keep spending money on all your friends.
No, it's because your appointments to the legal counsel. Take accountability. Man up to it. You're a man. Man up to it, okay?
You know, if you want to go gender, that's fine, but we don't need to do that here. I could point out to, you know, you and Jimmy. Let me finish, let me finish.
But it's convenient. You don't want to, you don't want to talk about certain things.
Our police chief was being a racist and a sexist.
Listen, Mario, that's all in the past.
We're going backwards.
You've been the mayor for the five years. What have you done in the five years? What have you done in the five years?
You refused to defend me.
Except for blaming people.
When I asked you to do something.
Except for blaming people and increasing our legal fees.
You rewarded him with $700,000 when he retired.
That was not.
Mario.
He was entitled to that.
The first five years we were there, we never had any affordable housing issues. You came in one year. It's a catastrophe.
You guys, 42 years, did nothing.
Take accountability, my friend.
I had the first affordable housing.
Mario, stop pointing fingers. Man up to it, okay? Put your big boy pants on, and you man up to it.
And you have also, oh, you didn't put a shovel in the ground for affordable housing. You didn't know what a shovel looked like till I came in and said, "We're gonna build."
Until you walked into it, is that what you're gonna say?
Then you said, "No, no, you don't build."
You know what, Mario?
Great move, Mario.
You know what?
That's what you did in your five years so far.
You know what? You are able to use that excuse.
I miss you guys so much.
Let me speak. Let me speak. Because this is, this is my last regular mayor and council meeting. I've been in this town since 1997. This is my last meeting. Mario, you've used that excuse for the past five years, okay? Starting January 1st, when I'm no longer here, you are not going to have that as an excuse. You're not going to have anyone to blame, okay? So you do the best thing for the town and stop pointing fingers, okay?
I'm just saying that I'm gonna clean this mess up that you created.
You know what? You had five years to clean up the mess. You haven't done anything.
Controlled.
Except for pointing fingers and increasing our legal fees. So let's get on with the meeting, okay? I had enough of you, Mario.
You're just howling at the moon. Stop it. Stop it already. All right, let's have our respectful flag salute. Okay. Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of America, the republic which stands.
Indivisible with liberty and justice.
Like to just, after that tirade, it's still important that I, what I usually do is have a moment of silence for residents who have passed or other people who have been significant to the town. And sadly, this month, I mourned the loss of my older sister. She was a terrific sister, a terrific professor at NYU in the School of Engineering. And if you just join me in paying some respect to her, thank you. Thank you. In terms of COVID-19, let me just give you all an update. As of today, we have 16 active cases. We've had six since Friday. We had two today. In total, historically, we've had 155 cases in town. And we've sadly had five deaths of residents, with the last death being, I believe, a mid-May. So I know everyone's trying real hard to protect themselves and others and their families. And I, you know, I think there's a light at the end of the tunnel in terms of a vaccine and hopefully stopping the spread. So if you're in the park, please wear a mask, socially distance. We've done really well, and right now, there's a bit of a surge, so please join me in being careful. If you need anything from Borough Hall, the best thing to do is to call ahead, and then they'll accommodate you with whatever you need. You may not even need to go inside and just deal with it outdoors, okay? And it looks like we'll probably be virtual in these meetings for at least another month or two, maybe longer. We'll see how that goes. Madam Clerk, could you please read the Open Public Meetings Act statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting was given to the press and posted as required. Date and time of this meeting was legally given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act. This notice is on file with the municipal clerk and posted on the bulletin board. Minutes of this meeting will be made available to the public upon the completion of typing and proofreading by the municipal clerk.
Thank you. Councilman Wu, I think you had wanted to say something.
Mayor, I'm sorry. You want me to take roll call?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Mayor Krajec.
Here.
Councilperson Savari.
Here.
Oh.
What, she was here before, but maybe she left.
She muted, Gloria.
I'm here, loud and clear, Mayor, or King Mario Krajec, should I say?
We don't see, can you turn your camera on?
I'm sorry?
We don't see Councilwoman, no. Could she turn her camera on?
Councilperson Zavarsa.
He's muted.
I'm here. You couldn't hear me. It was muted.
Thank you.
Councilperson Wu.
Here.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry.
He said?
Yes.
You forget. You didn't mention my name.
I believe I, oh, I thought I said in the beginning. Councilman Farrell?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I know Councilman Wu had asked me to.
Yeah, I I just wanted to bring up to the council, I know Resolution 176 to fill in the Jimmy Song vacancy, his sudden resignation. I just want to make a motion to nominate, given that Mr. D. Gregorio is someone who ran this year. I think he's the best candidate to replace Jimmy Song. So I wanted to personally make a motion to nominate and confirm David D. Gregorio as the councilperson to replace Jimmy Song. Effectively immediately.
I second that motion.
Okay.
Thank you, Bill.
Yep. And I also, I also have one more resolution that I'd like to add to the.
Can we finish voting on this one, Bill?
Yeah, I was just gonna say.
No, I just want, I just wanted to bring it up, just to let you guys know before we jump into something else.
We had to add a resolution. It had to be done in caucus. We said there was nothing being added to the agenda.
It's related to what we discussed in closed session.
But then it should have been discussed before in closed session, and it should have been added to the agenda. We were told nothing was being added to. Well, he can't do that. Actually, Town McMorro asked specifically if anything was being added, and you all said, you especially, Mary, said no.
Yeah, because, because. Because Mayor is being very selective. What else is new?
Why don't we do this? Why don't we do this? Why don't we have a vote on the, on the motion?
We have to vote on David, and then we need to have him sworn in so that he can participate in the meeting.
Okay.
So let's call the roll.
Exactly. Thank you. Councilperson Farrell?
No.
We're voting on Mr. D. Gregorio. Okay.
Are you sure about a no vote?
Not a no for David?
Wait, just be clear. The motion was made to nominate and appoint Mr. D. Gregorio to the council seat vacated by Councilman, former Councilman Song.
So he's hinted to you, Ramona, that you're supposed to.
Okay, yes, yes.
Yeah, see, I told you.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Marion, it's good.
Be respectful.
Unbelievable.
Please be respectful.
Okay, Councilperson. All right, Councilperson Farrell?
Yes.
Savari?
Yes.
Oh.
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
It passes, Mayor.
Can we please have Joe Marinello swear David in now so that he can participate in the meeting?
David, unmute yourself.
Can you just explain the procedure for doing this virtually, Mr. Marinello?
Sure. The state has put in rules for accepting oaths, affirmations, and notaries by Zoom. We've been doing swearing ins by Zoom since probably March on all types of hearings that require somebody to certify or take an oath. So there's much precedent for an oath being taken virtually as long as David has a Bible and a right hand to raise.
Okay. And you have the oath, okay?
Yes.
How does he actually sign it after you administer?
I'm sorry?
How does he sign the oath of office?
We'll provide him a copy of the oath to sign. Dave, I can't see your right hand, Dave.
My right hand is.
I got, yeah, I got a thumb. I see. Okay, there we go. All right.
You need a Bible?
You have one to put your left hand on?
Yes, I do.
Okay, great. Okay, so left hand on the Bible, right hand in the air?
Okay, hold on. Make sure it's right side up.
Okay.
Here we go.
Yep. I state your name.
I, David D. Gregorio.
You solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States and this state.
In the United States and this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I will faithfully.
I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties of the office of councilman.
All of the duties of office of councilman.
Of the borough of Englewood Cliffs.
Of the borough of Englewood Cliffs.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Councilman.
Thank you.
Councilman D. Gregorio, welcome to the council, Councilman D. Gregorio.
Welcome, Mayor Krajec.
Look forward to working with you.
Likewise.
I know you have. I know you have lots of ideas, and we may not always agree on them, but I think we'll find a good path for the town. Thank you.
I hope so. Thank you.
Thank you for willing to serve. I know it's a big time commitment, as anyone on council will tell you, and it's sometimes even more than the time. It's the abuse that you suffer, but we do it for the town, and we welcome you.
Well, I'd like to thank my family for being supportive in this, and my wife and my son, and also my parents. And I'd like to thank all of the people that supported me in this. And so I'm very honored, very grateful, and ready to move on with the people's business.
Okay, thank you.
David. Mayor, if it's okay, just to make it easier for myself, because I left Councilman Song blank in my boxes for votes, I will be replacing where Jimmy Song used to vote right in the middle with David D. Gregorio. Okay, thank you.
And I forgot to thank Billy for the nomination. Thank you very much, Billy Wu.
Look forward to working with you, Councilman D. Gregorio.
So you know, the biggest perk you get is a parking spot at Borough Hall, which I don't even have, but you'll get a parking spot like the other council members.
I'll try to ride my bicycle.
Excellent, excellent. And hopefully, we'll be able to meet in person soon, as I mentioned earlier. So let me just mention that the Borough Charity Project, which is the Office of Concerned Food Pantry in Englewood at St. St. Louis Church, is in desperate need of nonperishable food items. The demand is incredibly high right now, and there's over 1,000 families that are benefiting from that. There's, as I've mentioned many times in the past, we may not realize it because of where we live in our busy lives, but there's an abundance of working poor people in Bergen County. And so these people need help, and if you can, please drop off nonperishable food items either at the police station or just go down into the Office of Concerned in Englewood. They also have a website if you feel like you'd rather just contribute through a payment. So thank you. And also, I see George McKenna just about every Sunday at church, and he thanks us profusely when I see him. So keep up the good work, and I think maybe next year, we'll also add another charity to work with. And I'll be open to suggestions on that. We, we have put up and lit the Christmas tree, the holiday, the Christmas tree at Borough Hall. And there's a menorah there, I believe. The first night is tomorrow, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct.
Is that right? Okay. And so that'll be lit tomorrow. We avoided having a gathering. We just put it up. And for obvious reasons, we didn't want to expose people to a health risk, so it's there. It's still the season, or seasons plural, so we look forward to seeing that lit up for the next couple of weeks. We've had department head reports issued.
Also, and I'd like to remind you, Hanukkah does start tomorrow night. But the borough also has placed the menorah outside next to the Christmas tree.
Right. I'm sorry. I thought I was clear about that. Yes, it's right next to the Christmas tree, so it's on Hudson Terrace in case you're driving by. So department head reports were issued to all of the council members. Mr. D. Gregorio will read you into everything as, you know, as things develop now that you're a councilman. If anyone has any questions on those, please ask the borough administrator. Okay, Ms. Duffy, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, all right. Right. Correspondence, we've had, we had, the first item was the Councilman Jimmy Song resignation. The next one was the Democratic Municipal Chair Ramon's replacement to vacancy. McGurney, McNerney and Associates Tax Appeal, Associate Appraisal Group Tax Appeal, and State of New Jersey DOT Award Letter for Roadway Improvement Grant. So those are all available at Borough Hall, or you could ask the clerk, and she'll give you a copy of those letters and correspondence. As I mentioned in the, I think at the last meeting, we're moving forward assisting the New Jersey Department of Transportation with a bike roadway through, through town connecting into Tana Fly. So basically, what that means for us is that the shoulders will be widened as they once were before there was a large, wide center turn lane put in. And what that means for most of us also is that bikes will no longer be in the right lane of the travel, so safer for everybody. And it's been a, I don't know why, but this has been a huge project for the DOT. It's taken many years to get it together, and I thank them for doing that. So that'll go all the way up to the state line. Most of the problems are actually in Englewood Cliffs because the shoulders are so small. Narrow, rather. We've taken care of Resolution 20-176. So Ms. Duffy, you could just consider what Mr. Wu moved as 20-176.
Correct, yes.
And then minutes. These need approval. I'll just comment that I do this every meeting. I'm not happy with the way minutes are kept. And I won't belabor the point, but the October 4th minutes, which was the 12 and a half hour meetings, which some of you remember, and some of you are trying to forget as well. So that, that special meeting, there's a statement in the minutes that says the mayor made comments. Well, I actually gave the clerk what my comments were. They recorded their own video. You could read those comments. They didn't make it into the minutes. I'll deal with that separately.
Mayor, that's false.
One of the other, let me just finish. One of the other comments that I made was, I think it was like right before we went into closed session, when we came out of closed session, there had been a problem with the Zoom, and people who tried to join were not permitted to join, were turned away. And then the Zoom problem was fixed, and I said, "Well, the people who were turned away 30 or 40 minutes ago don't know that they could come back," so it's.
Finally, a litigation pending on this, so I'm gonna recommend that you not.
What I, this is what I said on October 4th. I didn't interrupt you. I said, "Look, look, we, we need to reschedule this meeting." Violating the Open Public Meetings Act, and that didn't happen. We continued with the meeting, and then there was a lawsuit that came out of it. So just for the record, it's at about 12 minutes and 58 seconds on the recording. I actually say that, and I also say a few other things, which don't go by the minutes that are written, go by the recording. Can we try not to talk over each other, please?
No, because.
I'm talking, then you just need to stop talking.
No, I'm not gonna do that. I'm not gonna.
Well, then that's not very courteous, is it? Okay.
Mayor, if I may speak.
You may.
In the minutes that, like, I agree, it was 12 hours, and it did, it was very time-consuming to type up during work along with other responsibilities that we have. Your statement was summarized. When you reached out to me, you then provided, just this week, your full written statement, which I was able to add into the minutes as you requested. I sent an email to the governing body saying that the October 4th meeting minutes were amended as per the mayor's request. Therefore, they were amended.
But anybody who's interested in hearing what the mayor had to say in the October 4th meeting is more than welcome to go onto the borough website and watch the video.
All 12 hours of it?
12 hours of.
Actually, it's at 13 minutes.
Why should we only summarize what you had to say? Everybody's.
No, that's fine, but because I was actually making an important point at that meeting, which we could have avoided some of the problems that we now have had you just listened to me then.
Okay, well, in any event, what you asked that I add in the minutes, or certainly added, Mayor.
Okay, well, I haven't seen a redraft, so.
I sent, I sent them two days ago, or perhaps yesterday, and I labeled them revised October 4th minutes. I sent them to everyone, and you actually wrote back.
Okay.
Mayor, by the way, were you referring to the, by the way, were you referring to the lawsuit that you had encouraged to have been filed?
Actually, I never encouraged lawsuits. I discourage lawsuits.
Okay. Mayor, can we have a motion on the minutes so we can carry on?
If the council wishes to move them, they're free to do so.
They're moved.
Are we moving them all together?
Move them all.
Okay, may I have a motion, please? And again, October 4th were revised as the mayor requested.
Motion to move all minutes.
And second to that motion.
Okay, you want to do a roll call?
Yes, thank you. Councilperson Farrell?
No.
Including the mayor's revised October 4th?
All of them.
Okay.
Are you sure, Ramona?
Yes, I'm sure.
Be respectful, also, now.
Well, if you be respectful to.
Okay, Savari?
Yes.
Oh?
Yes.
D. Gregorio?
David cannot vote on that.
Correct, but I have, still have to call his name.
Yeah, so Mr. D., Councilman D. Gregorio, yeah, you could abstain if you want.
You need to mute yourself, David. You're muted.
Abstain, not abstain.
And leave yourself unmuted, Mr. D. Gregorio.
I will. Thank you.
You're welcome. Aversa?
Yes.
And Wu?
I'm abstaining. I haven't had a chance to review all of them.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda is the public portion of the meeting. A motion to open to the public, please.
Both.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Keep everybody on a five-minute timer, please, so we can be done at a reasonable hour.
Anyone?
Thank you.
I second the motion.
Thank you.
What was that? So if there's anyone from the public who wishes to be heard, please just raise your hand virtually or wave or unmute yourself if you're on a phone call, on the phone, and we'll try to recognize you in the order that we see you presented. So go ahead, please. If there's anyone wishing to be heard, raise your hand. You could do so virtually. There's, there's a top, a part of the Zoom.
I'm looking, Mayor. Unless you see someone.
I don't see anyone, which is probably a statistical oddity. Mr. Towser, yes. Now, can you unmute yourself, sir? Mr. Towser, you're muted. Can you unmute yourself? Thank you.
Hi, congratulations, Mr. De Gregorio. I just want to know, in the interim, if I, I have some copies of letters to send, but I want to make sure and thank you for your service, Mr. Alversa and myself, that all of you get copies. So Councilwoman O and Councilman Alversa, were you still getting your mail until January?
I believe so.
Okay. They will.
And and the, and the new council people will have emails right away?
They will.
They'll have their emails effective January 1st.
So none of the, so none of the new people yet have an email?
No, sorry, they do not.
They don't have a borough email yet because they're technically not sworn in yet.
Okay.
If you. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
So if I, so if I send something with their name to you, is that you can get it to them?
Absolutely. If you're going to email it to me, I will email it to everyone. I can certainly get it to Mr. Ketrubis and Mr. Park. If you're going to provide me with hard copies in a sealed envelope, I'll get it to them as well.
Okay, because the matter from last year is not at all resolved. So just, and, and by the way, if any of you want to speak about it to each other, I'd appreciate that. It's, I think it'll be helpful.
Okay.
Mr. Towser, if you come to Borough Hall, just call and someone will go downstairs and meet you. I'll meet you myself and get the paperwork.
Well, I think I'll submit everything electronically for now and then you can use hard copies. You know, given the pandemic, everything, you know, you can contact me back through email.
Sure, whatever's easier.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
You can copy me if you wish as well.
Oh, yeah, of course. Everybody's going to be getting copy. Thank you.
I see, okay.
Anyone else there? I went through, I have three pages of, oh, Mrs. O'Shea.
Yes, good evening, everyone. I have to say, I find it very disconcerting to hear the way the meeting progressed there in the beginning. It's not proper. It's totally wrong for sitting councilpeople to act in the fashion that Gloria and Ed were acting and Debbie also. You should not be interrupting each other. You should not be speaking over each other. It's very hard for members of the public to even understand what you're saying. It all goes mushed together. It's just terrible. And regarding the item that you had on the agenda for closed session regarding a tax appeal for 800 Sylvan. I think that's outrageous, totally outrageous, that 800 Sylvan is looking for a tax appeal. I believe they did get a tax appeal earlier, either this year or last year on the property or on part of the property. I'm not exactly versed in it, but it's wrong. It's so, so wrong. And that shouldn't be something that's even contemplated. Very disappointed in hearing that, really very disappointed in hearing that. And Mario, I'd like to give my personal condolences on the lawsuit system. I don't have siblings, so I don't know what that feels like, but I'm sure it's terrible. Okay, and David, congratulations on your appointment. Okay, good luck and I hope that you are a calm voice up there.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Mayor, can I respond to that?
Yes, Councilwoman O, please go ahead. I'd love to hear.
Okay, Ms. O'Shea, you've been on the council before, so you know how things work. There's nothing wrong with having a discussion, okay? And we're entitled to have discussions on any matters. It doesn't mean that we're going to vote in certain way. So I just wanted to point that out, okay?
Mr. Perino, Mayor?
One second, Liz, I'd also like Mrs. O'Shea. In fact, the tax appeal that closed session goes back to 2017. There hasn't been any settlement on with 800 Sylvan. The settlement that you're probably thinking of was for the same property, but for Unilever. So it was settled up to 2016 and it was a substantial amount of money. But the 800 Sylvan portion from the time that Normandy purchased the property has not been settled and it's been on the table. Just to clarify.
I just feel I need to make it clear because we have so many people from the public here that.
That was pretty clear.
Well, no, my, my position is I think it's a complete outrage that 800 Sylvan would even be looking for a tax settlement from this. Anybody else wishing to be heard?
Mr. Perino?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Russell Perino, 220 Fayetteville Avenue. A couple of comments I'd like to make. One, update to the council and members of the public. The planning board participated in hearings beginning on November 30th and completed, were completed on the 7th, this past Monday. These are the hearings in Hackensack at the courthouse, which regard to 800 Sylvan avenues to proposed projects. The testimony continued from Monday through Monday, a one day break because one of the attorneys for the borough was tested positive and the hearings had to go from being partial in person and partial virtual to all virtual. So there was, I guess, about a day lost. Altogether, about 30 hours of testimony. And I wanted to thank the members of the planning board that participated, listening. It was, it was quite a long process. And I think we did the best that we could. And I thank specifically JP Lee, Mary O'Shea, Carol McMorrow. You know, especially, I know she was on 30 hours, maybe Mary was as well too. We did our best, participated the best we could in light of the fact that where we defunded and defanged on some level. We were not, and are not the deciding authority on an application. As the members of the council know, the public may not know that there was a special hearing officer appointed by Judge Barrington. And that special hearing officer is the person that will make the decision or at least the recommendation to Judge Barrington. But we participated. We had our experts, three professionals who testified extensively throughout the proceedings, a traffic expert, engineer, and here the third one is the planner, actually the planner for the, the planning board. There was no active participation by the attorneys for the borough. We started out with three and after the COVID issue, it ended up being one. But there was literally absolutely, absolutely no participation by the borough attorney at all. So the planning board did the best that we could in critiquing the plan is a term I use. And things were completed. As I said, the applications were heard and completed on, on Monday. The special hearing officer will now make his recommendations at some point, we don't know when, to the judge. And then the borough and the planning board will have the right to offer comments on his recommendations to the judge. So he did not make his, his recommendations yet. Judge Gallopoli is returning Judge's name, who, who actually is a special hearing officer in this matter. So I look forward to working with the new council, including David and the new folks that'll be sworn in on, in January. And I look forward to the planning board working hand in hand, gloves, you know, in hand with the borough again. And I hope that the governing body will see its way through to rescind that, that resolution that was adopted a month or so ago and that the board be put back in an appropriate place with appropriate funding that we can carry on our function on behalf of the residents of Englewood Cliffs. And I'll stay on a positive note. Good luck to add in Gloria. We disagreed maybe more than we agreed, unfortunately, for the past year or so. But I wish you both well and happy pursuits in the future. That's it, Mario, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you for your service as the chair of the planning board. Thank you. Anybody else?
Let me, Mrs. McMorrow?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Carol McMorrow, 489 Summit Street. First, I would like to congratulate David. Wish you well, David. And anything, anybody can ever help you, please, or any questions? Be more than happy to, to help you too, if you had anything. I wish you the best. Yeah.
Thank you.
You're, you're very welcome. And I'm sorry to hear about Jimmy Song. I wish him well too and for the years he served. Gloria, Ed. I'm going to take the high road here. I wish you both well. Gloria, our kids served together, played baseball together, okay? And I don't agree with the majority of your votes. I definitely don't agree with how you've treated me or members of my family, but I'm going to still wish you well and good luck in whatever future endeavors you have. Mayor, my comments, and again, I've been doing some more reading during the extended time period. I want to overdo my five minutes before. I'm on the 800 Sylvan tax appeal. To me, there's nothing more important than what I saw on here. And I, I came across some very disturbing information that I wanted to bring to the council's attention. And first of all, the Choi group was appointed by, by the Democrat majority. They were very tough negotiators. I was pro se on that. I've never done a pro se. I've never been pro se before and represented myself. It was an experience, a learning experience. And I'm glad I did it. I learned a lot from it. As I said, they were tough negotiators, but they, they were always respectful, you know, to me. That being said, on Mr. Wunsch's bills, on the October 2nd bill, this is what I found that is very disturbing. There are notations on Mr. Wunsch's bills that he had direct conversations with John Bang of the Choi law group, who are the representatives of, who represent the town for tax appeals. John Bang is also the Democrat 37 majority for Bergen County. On October 2nd, had one, two, three conversations with Mr. Bang about Normandy, about Normandy's 800 Sylvan's tax appeal. Mr. Wunsch is a special counsel, okay? He had no authorization to be calling Mr. Bang about anybody's tax appeal, let alone one of the largest ones that are looking to get a refund of over a million dollars to the borough. Number two, after those conversations, he took it upon himself to then discuss this tax appeal with Andy Del Vecchio. After that, he had more conversations with Johnny Bang about 800 Sylvan's tax appeal. Um, I, I, not only is it not within the scope of Al Wunsch's responsibility to call John Bang on who's a tax appeal attorney and to try and cut a deal for 800 Sylvan in refunding them over a million dollars. It's highly inappropriate that raising a lot of red flags and questions. What was Al Wunsch doing? Did anybody on this council have any knowledge that Al Wunsch was trying to negotiate a refund? What appears to be a refund for 800 Sylvan with the tax appeal attorney and Andy Del Vecchio? Because it's not on any of your closed session minutes. I went back and checked. Not once was that, that I could find in the last year was, was 800 Sylvan's tax appeal on your closed session. So who directed Al Wunsch to try and cut a deal for 800 Sylvan? That's my first question.
Well, let me just answer that for, for myself, just to make it clear. I was not aware of that and I certainly wouldn't have. And, you know, it's, it's basic just, you know, outright greed that 800 Sylvan would even be doing this and that a guy like Wunsch would take it upon himself and, and Del Vecchio, who you know, is just super aggressive with everything. They don't know when to stop. It's your money, folks. Everyone on this call, except I see Del Vecchio's partner on here. So that's, you know, that's clown like itself, but this is our money and a guy like Wunsch is giving it away. And I have to assume that the Democrats on council knew about this because the Republicans certainly didn't.
Absolutely not.
Well, I'm not going to.
Mario, you know what happens when you assume, right?
Can I just please?
I'm highly confident that you all knew about.
If you had to respond, I would like. I'd like to respond to Mrs. McMorrow's question.
I know, but Ms. Savari, I just want to be very clear.
I want to be very clear too.
Okay, but hold on. I, I wrote my statement down, okay? While, while I was looking at this, while you were in closed session. I was very clear. I'm not accusing any of you of any. What I am, okay, what I am, what I am doing is making sure I'm bringing this to your attention. I found, but I need to finish. Please, Debbie, please, this is really important.
Well, the mayor interrupted you and you were fine with that.
Yeah, I'm just saying, everyone, please just.
We had no knowledge of those conversations.
Hold on.
Mr. McMorrow, your time is up, so thank you.
That's, no, it's not up. I was interrupted.
Never a motion accepted for that, Mr. Alversa.
I second the motion, Mayor. I, I second the motion. Thank you for your comments, Ms. McMorrow.
Excuse me, I'm going to keep talking.
Actually, we added it to the bylaws, Mario.
There was no vote on that motion.
We already added it to the bylaws. The vote would be not to have it. You don't even know the rules.
Control yourself, Mr. Alversa.
I did not use my.
Control yourself.
I, I did not use, I have a timer going. I did not use my five minutes. If everyone would just stop interrupting me, I can use.
About seven minutes.
Stop interrupting me. Okay, now, my question to the council is, who authorized Mr. Wunsch to go to 800 Sylvan and, and negotiate a settlement for their tax appeal, number one? Number two, it was not in their settlement agreement with you. And if he was doing this, this should have been brought to the council's attention and to the public's attention. These notations in his bill took place on October 2nd. Your vote took place on October 4th, okay? I, I would like to ask you what the definition of a quid pro quo is? And if Mr. Wunsch, if Mr. Wunsch engaged in.
You know what, Ms. McMorrow, you're really like stepping over the line. What are you implying here? What are you implying?
The residents.
What are you implying, Ms. McMorrow, former councilwoman? What are you implying by saying quid pro quo?
I'm asking.
Councilwoman O, please.
No, seriously. What are you implying?
Stop talking, I'll finish talking. You have the law.
No, I'm not going to stop unless you answer my question.
I'm trying to.
What are you implying?
I am asking you a question. Why Al?
You're not questioning, you're implying.
I'm asking you. I am, I'm asking you and stop yelling at me.
Quid pro quo? You're asking a question about quid pro quo?
Like a very guilty person right now.
Okay.
I am bringing to your attention that a lawyer that you paid over a half a million dollars to engaged in conversations with the tax appeal attorney without permission from anyone on this council. You need to prove to the residents why he did that.
You need to prove to the residents why he did that. It's not on your closed session minutes that you met and directed him to try and settle a tax appeal. He's not-
So, Carol, what are you implying?
Thank you for bringing that to our attention, Carol.
What are you implying? What is the quit pro quo part that you're implying to? I need an answer from you.
I asked you, what is the definition of-
No, what are you implying?
Miss, Councilwoman O, after 10 years, you should know that the resident is-
Uh, Mario, I didn't ask you the question, okay? So, you stay put.
If you, for whatever reason, have a guilty conscience, that's for you to-
No, I don't have a guilty conscience. I'm asking you what you're implying.
I asked you, what's the definition of a quit pro quo?
No, you didn't ask me about the definition.
Go back and play the tape.
Well, if you don't know what it means, you just go look it up then. But please stop wasting our time. And let's move forward. If you have nothing else to say, thank you for your comments. Let's move on.
I'm asking you, who directed Al Wunsch to go in and try and settle a over a million dollar tax appeal, um, settlement?
Okay, Carol, we heard you. You asked the question. No one's giving you an answer. Move on.
With someone that you were in settlement negotiations with to build a 600 unit plan and you did not disclose it in your settlement agreement. Who gave him authorization to do that?
Ms. McMorro.
If you don't know, then say I don't know. But don't attack me for bringing facts to your point.
Okay, thank you for your comments and your questions, Carol. Let's move on. Thank you very much. You talked for a half hour tonight.
No, I did not, Ed. You should be concerned with this information that are on his bills.
All right.
Okay, well, thank you for bringing it to attention. Now move on. Thank you.
Ms. McMorro, are, are you finished, or do you have more?
I, I, I'm finished. They're so disrespectful. It's-
Thank God.
Well, well, they are. And if you notice, all their cameras went off on this subject. So that, that's telling in itself.
Yeah, that's it. That'll tell you everything, Mario.
Mary, just because you have the camera on, it doesn't mean that you're being respectful to the rest of the council, okay?
Mayor, I have some information that I could shed some light on that part of the invoice.
Okay. Uh- May I turn the camera on, can you please?
So, when I had seen that on Mr. Wunsch's bill, I found it kind of odd. And I called him and just a few minutes, we spoke. And what he stated was that they were trying to get their tax appeal into the settlement. And he was against it. That's why he had to contact Johnny Bang. Mr. Bang, the attorney.
You would have no reason to contact Johnny Bang if that was true.
Okay, well, that's your opinion. Uh, oh, thank you very much.
As someone who just did, you only contact Johnny Bang when it's going to happen. Not when you, if you didn't want to-
Ms. McMorro, you should know, you should know that this is not going back and forth. Then your time was up and you're, you're done. So, please don't respond.
I'm not faulting Lizette. I'm just saying, that's not the reason.
Your, your time is done.
And I, and quite frankly, I don't know why that would jump out at you, Lizette, on that.
No, you know what?
I'm sorry?
I don't understand why that-
It doesn't matter what you understand, Carol. Move on. We have other people that want to speak.
Go ahead, speak.
Please stop speaking over each other. Okay, thank you.
So, pick someone else, Mario, from the public?
Yes, uh, well, I just wanna, um, mention one thing to the public. It's important that they understand what this issue is about. 800 Sylvan-
Yeah, this is it. This, this isn't a show about politics. Nothing else.
Can you please stop interrupting? Control yourself, Councilwoman O.
Uh, Mario, huh, just move on. Public speak.
For the benefit of the public, they should know that 800 Sylvan, despite having now gotten court approval to do whatever they want with that property and having a site plan approved, they are still seeking to have the value of that property, uh, reduced so they could get a million dollar credit or refund on their taxes.
It's their right.
Well, if that's how you feel, then I know the answer is to-
And you know what? We're not, we had a discussion. We're not saying we're voting one way or the other. So stop being political, Mario.
You, you cannot-
How can you not have a discussion on something that's so important? It doesn't mean that we're gonna vote in certain ways. So stop being political, Mayor.
Can, can you stop and let me speak?
No, I'm not gonna stop. I'm not gonna stop unless you tell the public the truth.
You can have the floor after me. It's okay. We'll listen to you, Gloria. As little sense as you make, we'll listen to you.
You know what? You asked me, you, listen, wait, no, I'm not gonna let you go on. Mayor, you asked the council, listen. Mayor, Mayor Kranjat, no, I'm not gonna stop. I'm not going to stop unless you give me the floor to speak. Mayor Kranjat, Mayor Kranjat, you asked the rest of the council to be respectful. You be respectful, George. You set good example to the rest of the council.
You're howling at the-
You're not respecting me right now. You're not respecting me right now. No, no.
You can have the floor after-
No, you're not respecting me right now.
No, I am respecting you. I'm telling you that I was speaking.
You, you absolutely are not.
In your rules, that's okay. But in the, in society's rules, that's not okay.
You know what, Mayor?
The floor after.
Mayor, you're not being respectful right now.
Well, I think the public would like to know what's going on, right? So I'm sure the public would agree with me because I will-
No, the public will not re- agree with you. You're not being respectful.
Your, your arguments don't make sense because when I say-
My arguments don't make sense because I don't agree with you.
Okay, all right. Are you finished? Are you finished?
I'm finished for now.
Okay, good. So let me finish. For the public, it, it's an outrage that 800 Sylvan would be looking to cut the value of their property by 50% after they just got a judge. And I don't agree with any of that, but they got a judge to approve a site plan and their right to build on that property. And the property will be worth hundreds of millions, if not more, as a residential property. So it's greed, it's outrageous, and it's your money that they're stealing from you, okay?
Can I have the floor now? Are you finished?
So-
Are you finished?
No, I'm almost done.
Okay, let me know when you're done.
And then when you see our attorney speaking to their attorney about tax appeals in the middle of their settlement discussion, and no one tells me, it's not in the settlement agreement. No one knows about it. None of the Republicans on council know about it. Certainly the public-
Part of a settlement agreement.
Certainly, the public doesn't know about it. However, um, I, I, I think we will definitely prevail on this. Let, let's just-
Are you done?
I am done.
Mayor and the public, anyone who owns a property has a right to appeal, okay? Just, just like the 800 Sylvan Avenue. They have, it's their right. Now, you know, you know, what you're saying is that the council should not even be discussing the settlement agreement? You know what? We need to discuss. We need to know what's going on from the professionals. The assessor and the count, uh, the town, um, uh, the, uh, the expert, okay? The assessor and, and, and the appraisal. It doesn't mean that we're going to vote one way, but we have the right to know what they're recommending. It doesn't stop us from having a discussion. Mayor, discussion does not equal to, you know, voting, uh, a certain way on tax appeals. And you should know that all the property owners, including Ms. McMorro, you, anyone else in this public, it's their right to appeal that, appeal their tax appeal. You cannot stop anyone from doing that. You should know that, being an attorney, okay?
And, and it's our right not to settle and let it go to court, which is-
Exactly.
And when that happens and you don't take the advice of your professionals, you wind up finding yourself in bigger trouble than you need-
I, I see 800 Sylvan lawyers are on, and I'm, I'm sure the two of you are, are doing their job for them. So Dan, you could-
Mayor, you know what? I resent your remark. I resent your comment. You accuse of us doing certain things without having facts and supporting-
On behalf of 800-
No, Mayor, what do you mean? What do you mean that we're, we're doing this for other people? You, you don't have any supporting facts. Stop talking, okay, without having that.
Here's a fact. October 2nd, our attorney is speaking to their attorney about a tax settlement. But never mentions it to the governing body. It never mentions it in the settlement agreement.
Because it wasn't part of the settlement agreement. I, I didn't speak out loud because I wasn't there. But if he was trying to hide something, why would it be in his invoice? And why would he mention it several times? Doesn't that seem a little odd? Like, you don't hide something and put it right there in your bills. So I don't know exactly-
When I represent clients, I actually tell the clients what's going on.
Mario, you need, you need to allow me to have the floor, because I allowed you to have the floor. Um, Ms. Duffy has expressed that she questioned that invoice and that she was told that they were looking to get it included. And Wunsch basically put a stop to that. You know, if that's the case, then it's his-
I didn't hear that the administrator says she's putting a stop to it.
I mean, if they- No, no, I'm sorry.
Mr. Wunsch exceeded his authority.
Can you please let me finish? If they turned around and said, okay, we'll settle for, instead of 62 million, um, we'll, we'll settle for 58 million. So are you still gonna say, take it to court? No, you're not. And we had this discussion in closed session. It's not something we really should be having in public because this is still under negotiations. And we don't know where we're gonna go. Are we gonna come to a settlement? Are we gonna wind up in court letting a judge decide? I don't know that answer. That will depend on what the council wants to do. But you're painting a picture that's just not there.
Mayor?
We're still open to the public. Can we continue with that, please?
Mayor, what I stated was that when I received Mr. Wunsch's October bill and I reviewed it and I saw that Mr. Bang was on his bill, I called and I questioned him because I wasn't sure why those two attorneys would be speaking. And he clarified that they wanted to add the tax appeal as part of the 800 Sil- uh, 800 Sil- uh, 800 Sylvan settlement. And Mr. Wunsch was against it and spoke to Mr. Bang about it. That, I guess, gave him additional information, uh, regarding the tax appeal. But nonetheless, it was not included in the agreement. That was-
Okay, I think we can move on now.
Can we just move on to the public portion, please, and let people speak?
I didn't hear the mayor.
Duffy, when, when did you speak to Mr. Bang about that bill?
I didn't speak to Mr. Bang. I spoke to Mr. Wunsch once I received the October bill.
And that would have been one-
Um, I think that bill was received about a week ago.
Okay, did you tell me about that issue?
No, I did not.
Mayor, why, why do you have to be informed of all the bills?
No, not all the bills. It's all the issues, right?
Right. Can we just move on, Mario?
You know what? You're being ridiculous.
Oh, my God.
You're, you're being ridiculous and you're being so political.
You think after five years, you know how to run a meeting, Mario? Let's move on. It's the public portion. Let them speak.
You think after 10 on council, you'd be more productive. Is there any-
You know what? You could say-
You're still learning, little boy. You're still learning.
Oh, okay, this is what happens. Now, Ed knows that he's kind of in a corner, so now he starts name-calling.
No, he's not in the corner, Mayor. You know what?
Mario, I'm in the best place ever.
Mayor, move on. Move on.
If I can say one thing, if I can, just for clarification, what I'm hearing is that these are two separate issues. The tax appeal, or at least they should be two separate issues, the tax appeal and the settlement. And it seems to me that the, the tax appeal should be, you know, take its course and, and, and either litigated or however. Um, it certainly does sound like it's a, quite a severe reduction. But it does sound like that these are two separate issues. And it's, I think, important, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, that the public understands that the, this, the tax appeal is in a different, in a different area or a different universe, um, or at least it should be.
Yeah.
Am I correct? And do I understand that correctly?
I'll, I'll, I'll respectfully disagree with you because if you're doing the settlement, you want to do a global settlement and resolve all issues, and that would include this as well. And that was, you know, that may have been done, may not have been done here. I'm not sure why the lawyers wouldn't even think about that. But no one discussed it with us, Mr. De Gregorio. And that's, that's really what the issue is. Uh, our lawyers didn't even discuss it with us.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else in the public wish to be heard?
Hold on, let me check.
Um, I do see a hand. Hold on.
Whose hand? Mayor, who do you see?
I, I thought I saw, um, oral-
Motion to close? There's no hands up.
Second.
No, hold on a second. There was a hand. Mr. Mate does, the hand is up.
Hello?
Mr. Delari, go ahead, Mr. Delari.
I have my hand up, but no, no one seems to see it.
There you go, Mr. Delari. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mayor, I would like to, uh, offer my condolences to you on the passing of your sister. I know that's a difficult, uh, period in your time. Um, I would also like to congratulate Mr. De Gregorio on being appointed to the council.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, I, I, I would like to respond to Ms. Savari's, um, rendering of why Mr. Song, uh, resigned. So she is alleging that because concerned residents about what was going on with, uh, 800 Sylvan wanted to have their voices heard peacefully, by the way. Nobody did anything violent or hurt anybody. Uh, I, and I would like to say that if Mr. Song was so upset about this particular incident happening, why did he wait till Saturday to resign? I believe there were two meetings in between the resignation and when that peaceful get-together was going on. He was very cordial to us. He was not angry. He actually seemed very remorseful as to upset, excuse me, Mr. Versa. Thank you. Um, he, he appeared to be very remorseful about what was going on, and he actually recused if I-
Why, why'd you bring up my name, Mr. Delari, and say, well, first-
I see, I see your light on. I thought I heard you, Mr. Versa. Because you're, 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 you're thingled up. So that's why I said, Mr. Versa. Uh, anyway, um, so I, I wish you wouldn't interrupt people because it kind of takes your, your thought process and where you're going with things. It's really not right that this goes on. Um, my question is, why did Mr. Song resign? Maybe it has something to do with this, uh, this reduction of a million dollars or a credit of a million dollars to a company who ha- I, I guess we're refunding some of, of their legal bills. I'd like to know who's refunding our legal bills when they make billions of dollars on something that you all seem is such a great idea. Uh, Ms. O, with all due respect, I, you, you really sound unhinged tonight. I cannot believe the way you've been ranting throughout this whole meeting. Uh, Mr. Versa, same for you. You know.
Yeah, but you shouldn't be surprised by that. I'm always unhinged.
The name, the name-calling, the name-calling. I'm not getting off. I'm not getting off. Mr. Mario, Mr. I mean, you, you, you really do not put yourself forward in a kind way. And most residents watching this can see that. And, uh, that, that's, you know, that's all I have to say. I, I, this is-
Okay, thank you for your comments, Ms. Delari.
You're welcome, Ms. O. I'm not finished. Thank you, Ms. O. I am not- Okay, do I do what you do, Ms. O? Ms. O, Ms. O, this is my time. Is that what you want? Because that's not what I want, Ms. O.
What do I want?
People to be able to speak without you being so disrespectful and interrupting, whether it's the mayor, whether it's Mrs. McMorro, whether it's me, whether it's Mr. De Gregorio, whoever it is. It's disrespectful. You are an attorney and you do not represent yourself. You do not represent yourself-
Your husband's an attorney.
Respectful way, ma'am.
Mr. Larry, your husband's an attorney, okay? And so is the mayor. And you are asking-
I am talking about your behavior, Ms. O.
Let me, let me have the floor.
I am talking about your behavior.
When you're done, I speak.
Okay, thank you.
When you, when, when the mayor is-
Do the resident finish first.
Excuse me, Mayor. I have the floor after.
What floor? You have the floor? I thought I had the floor.
You're done with your comments, Ms. Delari.
Councilwoman O.
No, no, no.
You said that the resident was-
No, no. You should be ashamed of yourself.
You said you were done and that it's my turn.
Whoever said I was done, Mayor. Why don't you listen to your audience?
Only one person can-
That are wrong, Ms. O. You have made more than one statement saying that somebody said something when they didn't. You really should listen to your audience before you interrupt.
It's my turn now.
No, it isn't. I am not-
Mr. Larry, thank you for your comments.
Mayor Kranjat, I'm sorry.
Okay, it's my floor, okay? You cannot have this floor.
Ms. Delari, you know what? Let, let her howl to the moon and then you can speak again.
Okay, Mr. Larry. You know what? You're being so political beyond-
I'm not running for office, Ms. O.
Okay, you know, excuse me.
I'm not running for office. You did.
Excuse me, this is not back and forth.
Oh, really? Because that's what you've been doing with me for the past of whatever minutes.
Okay, are you done? When you're done, I speak.
Let her finish.
Because I'm not going back and forth.
I'm waiting.
Are you done?
I'm wait, no, I'm not- I'm wait, no, I'm not done, I'm waiting for you.
Well, then, Mrs. Delari, I suggest you finish then, please.
No, when you're done, I will speak, and this.
No, you said you were speaking, the floor is yours now, Ms. O. And when you are done, I will.
No, this is not back and forth, are you done, Ms. Val? Are you done?
Do you believe?
No, I'm asking Mrs. Valari if she's done. If she's not done, I wait for her to be done.
You are leaving our town.
You have to mute, Ms. O.
This town and moving out of our town, and you sit there like you are God's gift to this town when you and your friends have destroyed this town, and we're gonna be left here.
Okay, are you done?
It's not a back and forth, Ms. O.
Are you done?
I'd like to finish, I would like to finish.
Are you done, when you're done?
No, I would like to finish.
I wait for you to finish.
And when I am done, I will say so.
No, you're not responding.
Interrupting me.
This is not back and forth.
Who's talking, you're the one that's interrupting me, Ms. O, what are you talking about?
This is not back and forth. You know what, stop being hysterical.
You call the, this council, I hope you watch this.
Take a deep breath.
Video.
Take a deep breath.
I, I'll wait till you're finished, Ms. O.
I'm waiting for you to finish.
Oh, I can't.
This is not, Mayor.
I will not interrupt you, Ms. O.
Okay, Mr. Larry, I'm done speaking with you. Mr. Mayor, this is not back and forth in the public portion.
You jumped in, so you get what you did.
No, I'm gonna wait for her to finish, and then, and then I'm gonna have the floor. Okay, so you finish.
You keep saying that, and then you keep interrupting.
No.
Just stop, please.
No, this is not back and forth, Mayor, you cannot have it one way. When, when the people that don't agree with you speak, you say this is not back and forth. But when it's your people, like Mrs. Valari, you want her to go back and forth, it's not fair. So I'm waiting for you to tell her to finish, so I could have the floor, okay?
That's fine, but remember, you give her the floor.
Okay, I'm giving her the floor to finish.
Okay, but then, don't interrupt her. Go ahead, Mr. Larry.
I'm not.
You did, ten times.
I'm not, I'm not interrupting, I told her to finish so that I could have the floor, but she's going on and on.
You just did again, go ahead, Mr. Laurie.
I didn't do it, and I, I didn't, I didn't do it again, Mr. Mayor, what are you talking about? You were speaking, not her, don't accuse me of doing it again.
We're giving her the floor, and you keep interrupting her.
Okay, do I have the floor?
Yes, the clown had left.
Thank you. I wanted to go back to what Ms. Sabari said about the, the, uh, that, that, uh, Councilman Song resigned because of the residents. You know, I remember a time, uh, Ms. Sabari, when there were issues with our police chief, and the whole police department and the union would march into our meetings to intimidate not only our council people, but the residents who were sitting there. None of you seemed to have an issue with that protest. Nobody resigned over that. Everybody swallowed and listened and took whatever they had to from whoever was throwing it at them, but nobody resigned. And I resent the fact of Ms. Sabari saying that he resigned because of that. Because, because people were concerned and wanted to speak to him about that. And I believe in my heart that Mr. Song resigned because he did not wanna vote on what you are voting on. And I think that he was remorseful that he did vote on those things that you probably got him to go along. He was a very quiet man, he seems very respectful, very nice guy. But you know what? He needed to really stand up to, to, to you, the people who have been pushing this thing since day one. You attack Mrs. McMorro nonstop, you interrupt her. She's trying to put something out there that is telling the residents what is going on. I wish we all could hear all the stuff that, that is, is behind closed doors and in documents, and we don't find out till it's done, and then we have no recourse. We have no, no, no one to go to and say, okay, what do we do now? Because our council people are not representing us. You seem to think that you are representing Engleworth Cliffs. You are representing the residents of Engleworth Cliffs, and guess what? They don't all agree with you. And maybe you should have taken that into consideration, and that's why you lost the election because the majority of the people did not agree with you.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Delari, that, that's your.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Versa.
Thank you, Mrs. Delari.
Lizette, it would be really nice if we could see you. You go in and out, you blank yourself out all the time, and it would be really nice, since you represent our town.
Thank you, Mrs. Delari, please, you've taken enough time.
I'm speaking to Ms. Duffy.
It doesn't matter, do that on your own time, your time's up, ma'am, thank you.
Okay.
I gave an extra three minutes after the ten you already spoke, so thank you.
Turn your camera on, you should all turn your cameras on, you don't want people to see your face.
All right, Mrs. Delari, thank you very much.
Thank you, goodbye. Okay.
Okay, Mayor, Mayor have the floor now?
Yes.
Okay, now that she's finished.
Well, let's close to the public, please, first.
No, wait, wait. Councilman Versa, I, I like to speak. So now that Ms. Mrs. Valari's done, and this is not a back and forth, I'd like to respond to her.
Go ahead.
So, um, the reasons that Mrs. Valari said that Councilman Song had resigned, like, how does she know that? I don't know why he resigned, like, how does she know that, number one? Number two, if she's complaining about me being disrespectful, where is she when the mayor is being disrespectful? You know what, it goes both ways. But she is silent when the mayor is disrespectful, calling certain council members certain names, okay?
What names?
You know what, no, Mayor, don't, don't set me up, I know what you're doing.
You're, you're.
You, you've called some members of this council with certain names that I would not even want to repeat, okay?
What, what names are you talking about? I never said that, it's Ed, versus always calling people.
No, Mayor. So anyway, Mrs. Valari, that, Mayor, this is my floor, stop interrupting me.
Go ahead.
You don't want, no, you just interrupted me again. You don't want me to interrupt when Mrs. Valari's speaking? Then don't interrupt me when it's my floor.
Go ahead.
Okay? So, Mrs. Valari, thank you for your comments, but you know what? Stop being political, okay? Because we don't know why Council, uh, Councilman Song, uh, resigned. Don't assume, okay, why? You don't know what he was thinking. So that's all I have to say.
Okay, um, look, um, I think we need to move on.
Yeah, let's move on, it's getting late.
You have other, um.
Um, there, there's a, uh, Mrs. Mutzakis. Okay. Mrs. Mutzakis?
I saw Mr. Mate's hand up also. So, Ms. Mutzakis is there, please speak. Or Mr. Mate, I saw your hand was up. Mutzakis, uh, we can't hear you, you may be muted.
No, she's unmuted.
Okay. We'll come back to her, I saw Mr. Mate's hand was up, Mr. Mate, go ahead.
I don't see Mr. Mate.
Uh, his hand was up, now it's not up, okay?
Let me look. He's unmuted.
Okay. So, uh, Mr. Mate or, uh, Ms. Mutzakis, Mr. Mate, go ahead. We can't hear you, you're muted.
No, he's unmuted, Mayor.
Okay, um.
I make a motion to close the public.
Hey, now, there's two people with hands up, we're going to make sure that people who wanna speak get to speak. Okay, last, last try. Mutzakis, if you're there and hear us, I know you had your hand up, please go ahead. And Mr. Mate, I saw your hand was up, if you wanted to speak, now's the time to do so. If there's anyone on a phone, uh, that we can't see you, um, wanting to speak, mute yourself and go ahead and just, um, state your name and address. All right, I have a motion to close the public portion, please.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Who seconded, please?
I did.
Anyone opposed? Okay, um, let's do this, uh, going down the, the agenda, payment of claims, this is resolution twenty dash one seventy-seven, November eleventh, these are claims for the period of November eleventh, two thousand twenty, December ninth, two thousand twenty. There, and the agenda itself, they're broken out into different categories, and, and you could see those categories. The total, uh, bill list is four million, six hundred seventy-two thousand, two hundred fifty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents. Uh, can I have a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Of course, I. Anyone who are paying to our affordable housing professionals. All right, so somebody moved, who was that?
I moved.
And there's a second, could I have a roll call, please?
Oh, by the way, Mayor, these are the, uh, professionals that you had appointed.
No, no, I didn't appoint Mr. Wunsch.
Councilperson's Pharaoh?
Uh, no to the affordable housing lawyers, and yes to everything else.
Sabari?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
De Gregorio?
I believe I need to abstain on this.
Um, I don't think you actually have to, but if, if you wish, that's fine.
That, that's correct, I don't think legally you have to abstain, David, but it's up to you.
He hasn't seen it, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I'm, yeah, I mean.
Even though I don't remember the last time a Republican signed off on the vouchers.
Aversa?
He's unmuted.
Councilman Aversa?
Yes.
Woo?
No to affordable housing professionals, yes to everything else.
Thank you.
We have, um, starting with number one seventy-eight, authorized settlement of five forty Sylvan Avenue LLC, lot six seventeen, lot fourteen. Um, I, I wanted to actually make sure the, the public knows who the ultimate beneficial owner of the property is. They always ask. Googling five forty Sylvan, you'll see that it's Otter St. Insurance, so. I mentioned that because I think the clerk should do that, just for the public's benefit. And also for the council, so people know if they have a conflict or not.
With, with all the tax settlements, Mayor, if they do pass, uh, we will correct the resolutions to state credit instead of a refund.
Okay.
Thank you, based on that, I'll move.
So just, I guess, for the public's benefit, uh, rather than, uh, paying people back in cash or, you know, by check, uh, they'll, they'll get future credits, uh, so there'll be less drawdown on our cash.
And we do it, um, individually, not consent?
We're not doing consent.
Okay, uh, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilperson's Pharaoh?
I'm going to abstain because the resolution is not clear with it, uh, it doesn't include the two thousand twenty.
Did it have to include two thousand, uh, twenty twenty?
It would have to include two thousand twenty.
The tax appeal is not for that year.
Well, but it, normally, if, uh, they accept it for that year, you know, for two thousand nineteen, uh, two thousand twenty would be the same.
Not necessarily.
That's not how it works. If the person wants to appeal for twenty twenty, that's up to them, that's not our.
I'm abstaining.
Him or credit?
That's his right to abstain.
All right. All right, Sabari?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
De Gregorio?
Abstain.
Aversa?
Abstain.
Woo?
Abstain.
Mr. Marinello, that is two yeses and four abstentions.
Motion passes.
Okay.
One seventy-nine, authorized settlement of John and Antonetta, Volantino, Seventeen Karen Lane, block six zero three, lot number six.
I'm moved.
Yeah, second.
Councilperson's Pharaoh?
Yes.
Sabari?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
De Gregorio?
I believe, uh, abstain.
Okay. Aversa?
Abstain.
Woo?
Yes.
Passes, Mayor.
And number one eighty, amend twenty dash one forty-eight, correct the amount awarded for solid waste collection.
Need a motion?
Wait, what property, which property is this?
This is, it's not, uh.
No, it's the sanitation, waste management.
Lizette, can you elaborate on exactly?
Yes, uh, the resolution that we, that we, that we adopted was incorrect. The number was, um, calculated incorrectly onto the resolution. The bid proposal was correct, and it is for four years, but it was written down as eight hundred thousand and change when it should have been a million. The CFO is aware because he did set the money, part of December, set the money aside pursuant to the, uh, bid proposal.
So does the budget have the higher number in it?
Well, most of this affects twenty twenty-one. Only, uh, I believe two months affects, um, this year for waste management.
Okay, so moved.
Second.
Uh, councilperson's Pharaoh?
Yes.
Sabari?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
De Gregorio?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
Thank you.
One eighty-one, authorized police participation in LESO ten thirty-three program.
Mayor, can you speak up, I can't hear you.
Number one eighty-one, authorized police participation in LESO ten thirty-six program. Uh, Ms. Duffy, can you explain what that is?
Sure, it's a particip, it's a yearly resolution that has to be adopted if the police department wants to participate in this program in getting, um, uh, defense equipment. Now, the resolution is not giving us the equipment, it's just saying that we would participate. If there's equipment that they want, then that's another resolution later on. But in order to want something and to get it, a resolution has to be passed. So it's just for, uh.
It, it doesn't, it doesn't require the borough, uh, buys anything or participates in any fees. So it's, this is every year we do this.
Correct.
Yeah.
There's a motion and a second.
Uh, would you tell me who, who moved it, please?
I moved it.
And who seconded it?
I'm seconding.
Thank you. Councilperson's Pharaoh?
Yes.
Sabari?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
Aversa, I'm sorry, De Greg, De Gregorio?
Yes.
Uh, Versa, you voted yes, and Woo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, number one eighty-two, authorized settlement of Michael and Tyler McMorro, four eighty-nine Summit Street, block five zero three, lot number one.
I need a motion?
I make a motion.
I need a second?
Second.
Councilperson's Pharaoh?
Yes.
Sabari?
Yes.
O?
No.
De Gregorio?
Um, should I consult with the attorney? Um, it was, I mean, I'm comfortable saying yes, but, um, should I, would it be more appropriate to abstain?
David, you can, you can do whatever you want on these, they're. You abstained on the other tax appeals, but you, you have a right to vote any way you want on it.
Or you could come back later, you could think about it.
No, I mean. I'll, I'll vote yes.
Aversa?
Abstain.
Woo?
Recuse.
I'm sorry?
Recuse.
One eighty-three, award contract for financial management services to the borough.
Woo seconded? Can you second a motion and then recuse?
It depends on if he's recusing because he has a conflict of interest, he didn't say why. Mr. Woo, do you know why you're recusing?
Um, I just felt comfortable recusing for conflict reasons.
But why did you?
Conflict reasons, then you can't speak in the motion, we're gonna have to start that again.
Okay.
I know that you understand. So why don't we?
If that, if that's the case. Okay, we can do it again.
Okay, I need a motion?
I make a motion, I made it before.
I need a second?
I'll second it.
Councilperson's Pharaoh?
Yes.
Sabari?
Yes.
Oh?
No.
De Gregorio?
Yes.
Aversa?
Stain.
Woo?
Yes.
One eighty-four, authorized. No, I'm sorry, one eighty-three, award contract for financial management services to the borough.
I'm moved.
Second.
Thank you. Councilperson's Pharaoh?
Yes.
Sabari?
Yes.
Oh?
Yes.
De Gregorio?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
One eighty-four, authorized settlement of Sylvan Avenue LP, two seventy Sylvan Ave, block three fourteen, lot fourteen. This is also a tax appeal settlement.
So moved.
Second.
Councilperson's Pharaoh?
No.
Sabari?
Yeah, so I just want to clarify that this is being taken as a credit and not a refund. And the resolution will be changed.
Correct. All the tax appeals will reflect that, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
Oh?
Yes.
De Gregorio?
Yes.
Aversa?
I'll abstain.
Woo?
Stain.
I'm sorry?
Abstain.
Thank you.
Uh, one eighty-five, resolution authorizing transfer of budget appropriations.
So moved.
Second.
Councilperson's Pharaoh?
I'm going to abstain.
Sabari?
Yes.
Oh?
Yes.
De Gregorio?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Woo?
Stain.
Uh, one eighty-six, this is authorized mayor's veto of ordinance twenty dash ten, and just for the public.
Moved.
I'm speaking, I'm speaking, folks, just so the public understands, on, on November twenty-third, there was a meeting at eight AM. Yes, eight AM in the morning. To consider this ordinance. And I didn't think it was appropriate at the meeting, and I stated the reasons why. I, I think in terms of full disclosure, the clerk should have actually included my veto with the package, so I'll read it to you instead. Uh, this is my mayor's veto. I hereby exercise my power. And I do hereby vote veto ordinance number twenty twenty dash ten in its entirety, my reasons are stated here and below. One, at the public hearing on November twenty-third, the borough attorney, councilwoman Sabari, the borough administrator and the borough clerk were unable to explain with specificity or clarity why ordinance number twenty twenty dash ten was necessary or appropriate. They were provided multiple opportunities to explain. Initially, we could then indicated that the bonding was required for a timing issue in collecting an affordable housing trust contribution from LG Electronics or its property owning affiliate, LG. The amount due from LG was repeatedly stated by the municipal clerk to be eleven million dollars, then changed to around one million, one hundred thousand dollars. The governing body should not have proceeded with the vote until clear fact was provided. Two, ordinance twenty twenty dash ten arises from the so-called affordable housing settlement, which in turn arose from the alleged October fourth, two thousand twenty special meeting of the mayor and council. Whether that meeting was duly noticed and duly constituted, and whether action taken at the alleged meeting is void ab initio from the beginning, is a subject of a recently filed lawsuit. Three, the borough council, Democrat majority, the borough councils as in attorneys, the borough administrator and the borough clerk have excluded me from actions and events leading up to the introduction of ordinance twenty twenty dash ten. And the settlement from which it arises. I will not lend any credibility to such intentional misconduct by permitting ordinance twenty twenty dash ten to take effect. The municipal, for the municipal government and planning board have been unlawfully usurped by the New Jersey judiciary in violation of the Engwood Cliffs residents' rights under United States Constitution, namely due process, unlawful taking, guarantee clause and equal treatment. Or equal protection. The judiciary and its appointed quasi-private slash quasi-public actors are unlawfully exercising the executive and legislative powers of the Engwood Cliffs mayor and council. With the quasi-private, quasi-public actors unjustly enriching themselves at the expense of the Engwood Cliffs residents without outrageous. New Jersey's, you scratch my back and I'll scratch your back, government at the taxpayer's expense must be called out for what it is. And ended, starting with.
It has nothing to do with this ordinance, can we?
You know what, Mayor, if you like to live in New Jersey, how about if you move out?
Five.
If you move out.
No, you know what, when I'm governor, I'll fix all this, but right now.
You'll never be the governor. That's a joke.
After question.
That's a joke.
Can I finish?
Well, now at least we know what you're up to.
Five, after questioning Councilwoman Sabari's borough attorney Marinello, borough administrator Duffy and borough clerk Duffy at the November twenty-third, two thousand twenty meeting, in the absence of any legitimate answers, I believe that ordinance twenty twenty dash ten is being used to establish unlawful slush fund. Slush fund, okay, under the cover of a suspect affordable housing settlement. Those questioned by me claim that the funds would be reimbursed once LG made its affordable housing trust payment. But there is no mechanism in existing law that would permit such a reimbursement or refund. Moreover, a settlement agreement, even if valid, could not change the law governing affordable housing trust funds. Given that I have a fiduciary duty, given that I have fiduciary duties to the borough and its residents, and for the reasons stated herein, I deem ordinance twenty twenty dash ten as materially adverse to the best interests of the borough of Engwood Cliffs. Ordinance twenty twenty dash ten is hereby vetoed in its entirety. In furtherance of transparency and due diligence, I encourage this council to get answers to unanswered questions and to stop violating the Open Public Meetings Act. I also encourage this council to stop playing politics with the borough's affordable housing obligations, but to stop excluding the mayor from these important matters. So that was my veto.
Can I, can I respond to that, Mayor?
In a nutshell, I didn't want to have to borrow money to put into an affordable.
This was not an ordinance to borrow money, this was an authorization to go out if we choose.
And borrow money, right?
Nutshell is exactly where you belong, in a nutshell.
Please let me finish, okay? The reality is, right, that this ordinance will allow us to go out if need be. The numbers haven't been finalized yet as to what's going to be needed to be supported by the borough. It's looking like we may not need to go out.
Good, then don't override my veto.
Of course I'm gonna override your veto because we don't know where we are going to be at the end of the day with the numbers.
Just as God made little green apples, this council will borrow the money and spend it, and they don't need to do that.
Okay, Governor, we'll fix it, don't worry.
You know what, motion through it.
I, I'm sorry, I just want to state something for the record. My, the mayor violated my rights by including me in that statement and speaking about my job performance, which is absolutely false. I just want to state that for the record. He's been told numerous times before that my job performance is not to be spoken about publicly, and he continues to do so. Thank you.
That's not the first time.
Ms. Duffy, you answered a question at that meeting, that's a fact.
And Mayor, and, and I stated, I said, no, I'd like to finish, you're again accusing me, I stated publicly that the number I was given.
Mayor, you asked everybody to be respectful, why don't you be respectful for the first time?
I stated publicly.
You stated eleven million, and you stated one point one million, and you weren't sure. That's not job performance.
Mayor, be respectful.
No, you said that I've kept you.
Be respectful.
You stated I kept information away from you, I can only give you what I have.
Yeah, of course.
Now, as far as this, the numbers concerned, during the meeting, I contacted someone in the building department, and they apologized that they gave me the wrong number. And I said it publicly, I apologized, that's it.
Right, and based on that, this council's going to.
Resolution one eighty-six, you can come second it.
Want to remind you?
I seconded.
Take a roll call, Lizette, please.
Mayor, be respectful, just like you said for the rest of the council, okay?
Councilperson's Pharaoh?
Uh, no to override.
Of course not.
Sabari?
Yes.
That's not respectful, Gloria.
Oh?
Yes, Mayor.
De Gregorio?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Woo?
No.
Of course not, Bill.
That's not respectful.
Of course not.
One eighty-seven, authorized the renewal, emergency, renewal of the agency medical services.
So moved.
Second.
Let me finish reading before, just a comment on, these, these people work so hard for us in town, they're always available. Couple of years ago, if you notice, we, I actually got them to move their ambulance and station it at our community center, so it's closer to our residence because of the congestion on Pal Sezav and coming up the East Hill. So I think it's worked out great, they're a great bunch of people who work there, we really appreciate their efforts, and, um, I think we can definitely approve this.
So moved.
Yeah, it was already.
Already been moved and seconded.
Uh, Pharaoh, councilperson's Pharaoh?
Yes.
Sabari?
Yes.
Oh?
Yes.
De Gregorio?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
Hey, and, and what has amounted to the biggest money dump since this Democrat majority came in in January two thousand nineteen?
Pointing fingers, we talked about this before.
The professionals on the affordable housing.
Yeah, the ones that you had picked.
Are, are once again, I did not pick Wunsch.
Well, except for him, you picked the rest of the council.
That's right, Mario, you could fix it when you're governor.
I have no idea what's going on with you tonight, but actually, it's not good. No, there's no point of order when I'm speaking, you can have it after.
You should fix it when you're governor, Mario, don't worry.
What I want to do is, because it's a money dump, we'll take one eighty-eight through one ninety-two, group them together, do them.
Great, thank you.
We need a, a motion and to.
You know, the Democrat majority, you have blood on your hands with this affordable housing.
Okay, a motion to approve.
You know what, Mayor, that's enough.
Now, we need a motion for the consent agenda, please?
Gloria, I'm like, actually, like.
So moved.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now you can vote on it.
Okay.
I need a motion to, uh.
Motion to approve resolution one eighty-eight through one ninety-two.
Thank you.
And if you want to, so, so, this is it, folks.
What?
Don't pay him.
What do you say, Mayor?
He's saying something for something.
No, I, I want him to explain what he's talking about.
Yeah, he's just name calling again, because that's what he does when he gets back into a corner.
Take the roll call, please.
Okay, councilperson's, councilperson's Pharaoh?
Let Governor Cranjak run the show.
Sabari?
Yes.
Oh?
Yes.
De Gregorio?
Yes, and, um, I think it's a very important, um, that we take lessons from what happened in Park Ridge and other communities, and be very, very careful. Otherwise, we're gonna end up in a much worse situation, and I hope the residents understand that.
Aversa?
Yes.
Woo?
No.
Uh, one ninety-three, authorized identification and hold on, owner of six sixty-four Summit Street. Ms. Duffy, what's the backstory on that?
Um, a seepage pit, um, this request came from the building department. It was reviewed by the engineer, they requested it, it was provided to Mr. Marinello's office.
So moved.
Second.
Councilperson's Pharaoh?
Yes.
Sabari? Mrs. Sabari, thank you. Oh?
Yes.
De Gregorio?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Woo?
No.
Ms. Duffy, on, on that one.
I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry, um.
Okay, okay, no problem, thank you.
Ms. Duffy, pass it. One ninety-three, has the homeowner paid the, the fee?
Everything's been handled, if there's anything to be paid, it goes through the building department.
Before I sign anything, I just need to make sure that fee's been paid.
If there's a fee to be paid.
I believe there is.
Yes.
One ninety-four, adopt emergency remote meeting protocol of local public bodies. Ms. Duffy, can you give us a backstory on that?
Um, that was Mr. Marinello's. Resolution.
Okay, Ms. Marinello, does anything need to be corrected there? I think there's a, uh, I think that there's a word missing.
Okay, tell me where.
On the second page, one, two, three, four, fifth, three, sidle, fifth, whereas, third line. I, I think the word and is missing in between resolutions and ordinances.
Okay, we can make that change, Ms. Mayor.
Maybe it should be or, no, that's okay, you do it. That's fine.
Is there a motion?
I'll move that resolution.
I need a second, please?
Second.
Who was that?
David.
Oh, I'm sorry, I have to get used to your voice. Councilperson's Pharaoh?
Yes.
Sabari?
Yes.
Oh?
Yes.
De Gregorio?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, one ninety-five, appointment of special litigation counsel Brent Coleman of Smith Fessel and Verbal for B E R L zero zero seven one four nine dash twenty.
Wow, are we bringing back?
Wow, we're bringing him back?
The readyback.
He was no good the first time.
This is, this is for who, what is this one for?
This is on the new concerned residents versus Edgewater case to represent the mayor who asked for his own counsel.
Mario, is this what you call quid pro quo?
But this, this is gonna cost, this is gonna cost the taxpayers extra money to represent, actually, the rest of us.
You, you guys are warned to actually run that meeting the right way on October fourth, and you failed to do it.
Mayor, don't say you guys.
You guys. Mayor?
I don't see why we would give him special counsel, because.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know why you're getting it, I don't know why you're hiring one of your old buddies, I mean, that's kind of ridiculous. You accuse everybody else of that stuff that you're doing.
What is, what is some quid pro quo here?
Yeah.
There is none, at least, you see, I'm not.
Oh, yeah, Mayor, you know what?
Governor?
It, it, what's good, what's good for the goose?
Absolutely.
It's good for the gans, okay?
But the, the bottom line is, the attorneys that are representing the borough have a conflict with, so it doesn't work.
Look, the, the bottom line is that the mayor expressed a position at that meeting that is contrary to the rest of the council. And if you, if he doesn't have a conflict now, he will have one shortly after you appoint the council, because if the lawyer speaks to everyone, he's gonna have the mayor giving him the story he gave everyone else earlier tonight, and this just avoids the problem.
And, um, Ms. Marinello, my, my, my position is contrary to the rest of the council on that meeting as well.
Well, I gave you all an opportunity.
You're not speaking for me.
When I sent, you know, hold on, let me finish, when I, when I, when I. When I sent, you know, hold on, let me finish. When I, when I, when I sent the email around, I asked everyone to let me know, uh, how they felt about it. I didn't hear from you. I did hear from the mayor.
Yeah, I apologize for not responding to that, uh, but like I said, uh, my position is contrary to the rest of the. Well, you can get your own.
I don't actually think that in and of itself is a conflict issue. The mayor has a different conflict also, because the mayor also sued the town in a case where, uh, the Florio Perucci firm represented the borough and the four individual Democrat candidates. So he's asserted a conflict with that as well, so.
I did actually, because I wasn't getting information, so I sued and that was the firm representing me. But also, if you listen to the audio of the October fourth meeting or the video, you'll see that I warned you all that if people can't join the meeting, there's a problem and you need to renotice.
But, uh, Mario, that's in, that's in court. That's not for you to decide. It's a court.
No, it's a public record. It's a public.
Let me, let me just state this. I think it's fair for Mr. Wu, if he does not want to be represented by the council, that you include Mr. Wu in this resolution, so that he, uh, isn't represented by someone he doesn't want to be represented by.
But what's the point? Does that mean that every time a Republican or a Democrat has a different opinion, we're gonna give them separate attorneys to represent them?
I just. Apparently, I would say no.
Let me finish, mayor. I understand if the mayor has a conflict. But now we're saying, because Billy Wu disagrees with the rest of the council, he should have a different attorney too and go with the mayor's attorney? This is ridiculous. This isn't what democracy is about.
Well, oh, there you go, the, the bastion of democracy speaking from the corner on my screen. Look, uh, Mr. Wu.
Don't be nasty, Mario.
Wu.
You are vile.
Mr. Wu does not have the same, uh, interests as you, obviously, and if he feels.
He has the same interests as you, mayor.
Mr. Marinello, I mean, bottom line is, Mr. Marinello, bottom line is, can I have, um, Pullman and his firm represent me as well?
No, I'm not gonna vote yet.
The council, that's, I, I, I would understand why you would want that myself, but it's not up to me.
You know what? You know what the bottom line is in this? It's not about the conflict. It's all political. It's all political.
Bottom line is that you should not have settled and we would not have had this problem, right?
What are you talking about?
We should have.
You're, you're talking about something else right now.
I know, Mario. I know what you're talking about.
You're not talking about apples to apples.
Yeah, I am actually, because the October.
No, you're not. You're not, Mario. You know you're not.
The October, October fourth meeting is where the wheels came off your meeting.
Mario, you're talking about something else. Don't go off the tangent, okay?
He made his nomination for governor. He made his bid for governor tonight.
Mr. Governor, you're going off the tangent. And when you become the ma, the governor, I'm moving out of the state.
All right, look.
Okay.
Mr. Pharaoh.
Can I be, uh, can I be added to that, uh, too? Because, um, so Gloria can have some more fun tonight.
Are you, are you allowed, Ramon? Are they gonna let me do that?
Did you, did you talk to the mayor before?
Is Mario gonna let you do that?
Look, the bottom line, let me just make this clear. The borough is represented by, if you pass these ordinances, no matter who individually is with whom, the borough itself is represented by, uh, the Florio Perucci firm, not, uh, that, so the borough has its defense. Truthfully, and I said this, uh, to you people earlier, none of you should be defendants in this case. There's not a single allegation in the complaint that was filed that asserts that any of you did anything individually. You acted as a borough, which is how you're supposed to act, and the borough should be the only defendant. If I had to guess, because they've done this before, uh, some of the people who have sued the town, I would guess they did this so this exact moment could happen, so that you all would have different counsel arguing different things to protect your own personal opinions. But quite frankly, there's not a single allegation that anyone did anything, and you should all be out of the case. So whoever gets appointed.
Save the borough some money and stay on with this and let's just move on, huh, guys? Come on. Mario, I understand you, you need different counsel, whatever, that's fine. But, but Billy and, and Ramon, you're just being ridiculous and spending money for no reason. Uh, it shouldn't be any money like Mr. Marinello said, because we're not, it's not an issue. So I'd prefer to be with the other firm to be safe.
You prefer to be with.
Money? What do you mean it's no money?
Let's just vote on vocal D's. Can we come on?
Bill, Bill, you just prefer to listen to the mayor.
No, no, um, Gloria, no, this is my own personal statement.
You've always been.
Gloria, stop, stop, stop. You know, make your own narrative.
Okay, let's move on. Let's move on, Bill.
Just keep creating your narrative. You've been doing it all night. It's fine. It's fine. Talk it over, everyone. It's fine.
Move on, Bill.
Yeah, just move on.
Time will tell, okay?
Okay, so, so, um, just let me get it straight. So Billy, you and Ramon want to be removed from this resolution. Is that correct? I want to be added to this resolution. Well, you're already on it.
No, he's not on the, the one.
I'm not, no, I'm referring to resolution one ninety five. We're not voting on one ninety six yet.
One ninety five. Yes, I want it to be added.
We're appointing special litigation counsel. It doesn't say anything here.
It's in the resolution.
It's just for Mario?
Yes.
I don't care if you want to add the others. At this point, if he has a conflict, we have to hire them anyway, so.
Yeah, I get it. I'm okay. I don't care.
So let's just combine one ninety five and one ninety six. Motion to move one ninety five and one ninety six. Can we do that?
With the amendment that Councilman Pharaoh and Councilman Wu will be.
Will be added to one ninety five.
And taken out.
One ninety six.
No, you're gonna be added to one ninety five and taken out of one ninety six, Ramon.
Correct.
Right.
We're all okay with that, everybody?
So moved.
Second. I'm good. Everybody's okay, right? I second. Let's move on. Take a vote.
Councilperson Pharaoh.
Yes.
Sabari.
Yes.
Oh.
Yes.
De Gregorio.
Yes.
Aversa.
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
One ninety six, appointment of special litigation counsel Florio. To each.
They voted on them together, mayor.
Oh, I see, okay. Um, I didn't read it before. One eighty seven, emergency resolution. NJSA forty eight, four dash forty nine, over.
Mayor, I can't hear you.
One ninety seven, emergency resolution NJSA forty eight, four dash forty nine, perenn over three percent limitation, close perenn. Um, Ms. Duffy, can you give us the backstory on that?
Yes, uh, Mr. Troutner had sent an email, I believe it was yesterday or the day before yesterday, saying, reminding everyone that, um, the matter that's in court now with affordable housing, that the borough agrees to pay fair share housing's attorney fees in the amount of three hundred and thirty five thousand dollars, um, within ten days of the court's approval of the agreement. And the ma, the governing body has to make good on the agreement. We don't have that money set aside in the budget, so it's an emergency appropriation to be able to pay that amount out of the, um, attorney fees. And this is because we decided to litigate. Had we not litigated and agreed in July twenty nineteen not to move forward, this is an amount that we would not have had to pay. So our hands are tied.
The, the other side of that story is, if we litigated correctly, we wouldn't have to pay this and we wouldn't have had to settle. Uh, but just so you know, our litigation counsel in the affordable housing case called two witnesses. Two. And then they wondered why they lost. Okay.
This is actually a, a site hearing, and the truth is, is that most of the comments by the public had to do with access to Floyd Street. And the reality is, is if we would have settled in two thousand nineteen, we wouldn't have had access on Floyd Street. We would have had a hundred and twenty foot buffer on Floyd Street, and we wouldn't have to have paid the three hundred and thirty five thousand fair share housing legal fees, because it's gonna be paid by Normandy.
So you used the word most.
Units instead of four fifty. So I know that we should have settled in two thousand and nineteen.
Yeah, right.
You believed otherwise. You convinced the public that they had a chance and they lost, and they lost.
You also mischaracterized what the public did, right? Because you used the word most. Most is more than half. More than half of the people mentioned other things as well.
Well, that's not true. The only other thing that was mentioned was fire safety. That's it. I was, I listened to the hearing. Did you listen to the public? Do you know?
Twelve hours of people speaking, saying they don't want to settle. They don't want residential housing at eight hundred.
You know why, mayor? Because you brainwashed them.
I don't brainwash people.
Yeah, you gave them selective information.
I like logical people and thank God.
Yeah, you know what? That's not true.
People.
That is absolutely not true.
Leaving the council in a couple of weeks.
And you know what? People are gonna find out sooner or later.
Okay, motion.
Good luck to you.
Seven.
I need a second.
Second.
Councilperson Pharaoh.
Oh.
Sabari.
Yes.
Oh.
Absolutely.
De Gregorio.
Yes, and I agree. If we had settled in two thousand nineteen, it would have been the wise choice. So, um, you know, I, I say absolutely yes.
Aversa.
Yes.
Woo.
No. Uh, resolution one ninety eight. This one is really interesting. Resolution to provide funds for legal counsel in the matter of state versus suplesa. So our, um, property maintenance official was informed that there's a resident that store the vehicle in the backyard. Uh, which I, I could almost guarantee that no one on this call does that. They live in town, except one person. That one person, um, decided that he was going to actually launch criminal charges against our property maintenance official. Our property maintenance official was doing his job, doing his job well. The car is still in the guy's backyard. And the property maintenance official needs to have an attorney represent him. And, you know, as a, as a borough, we need to stand behind good people. We need to stand behind people who are doing their job on behalf of the borough, and this is one of those people.
Well, um, I, I'd like to understand if, uh, it's so ridiculous, why is the state allowing this to move forward?
Well, I'm not saying it's moving forward. It's, it's been, uh.
It's been known as the state versus suplesa. So is it the state or is it a resident in town?
It's the resident in town who, uh, complained to the state about, you know, basically criminally complained about our property maintenance official doing his job. And, um, I hope you will join me in defending our employee.
But wait, I, Mario, I'm a little confused. So if it's, if it's, um, the state, so it's not the resident suing here? This is not the way you explained it.
Went by criminal charges. So when you do that, it's a criminal matter and the state appears as the, um, claimant.
But can't, can't the state, now, I know you're the attorney and, and gonna be the governor soon, so.
And I'm moving out of New Jersey.
If the state deems the, the charges to be nonsensical, I'm assuming it doesn't go anywhere, correct? So if it's gotten to this stage, somebody at the state level must think there's something egregious here, no?
No, it just started. It hasn't gone anywhere.
Listen, I, I don't want this judgment, but I, I know, you know, and everybody here probably knows who you're referring to. But I, I personally think if it's a criminal charge and the state is taking it on, why would the borough be paying for legal fees on?
I'm not saying the state's taking it on, but it's in front of the state.
The state versus the. It doesn't. What are the, what are the charges? For doing what?
Mr. Marinello, let me explain that to Councilwoman Sabari, who seems to want to support the wrong person here.
I don't have any idea who she's supporting, but I know that the, it's a criminal complaint essentially for harassment.
We normally cover legal fees for employees who are being accused of harassment to residents?
I, I don't know how many of them you've had, but this is the first one I'm aware of since I got here in March of last year.
Is the borough obligated to?
No, you have a, I mean, you could be obligated after the fact. Uh, if it's determined that the charge is dismissed and he was acting within the scope of his employment. But your actual ordinance provides only for the defense of civil claims that are brought against an individual, not for, uh, criminal claims.
Well, then I don't see why we would pay for it.
It does say.
Unless he was acting under the mayor's control and harassing the resident as the mayor has done, I'm sure.
You're sure of what?
I'm sure you probably told him to go harass the resident.
They didn't tell anyone to harass the resident. Saw a car in the backyard and, and as everybody else does. How many people have cars in their backyard that think?
Well, well, then, that's okay. You have the right.
Are you okay leaving your employees out there?
Our employees won't have the right to.
You know what, mayor? Mayor, I think this, this matter should be carried, and you could do whatever you want at the next meeting.
Yeah.
I, I don't want any part of this.
That provides for indemnification for our employees.
Yes, I, I think we should.
You guys don't. Carry this.
You guys don't actually get this person coverage tonight.
No, we should carry this. And, and, and King Mario will decide at the January meeting.
No, I don't think.
Let's move on.
Their job.
Let's move on.
People, do their job. You won't sit behind them. Meanwhile, meanwhile, you have a police chief out there.
Okay, Mario. Mario, I told you. I said before, let's move on. Stop blaming people. Stop.
I will always.
Pointing fingers to other people, okay? Move on. You could do whatever you wanted. Start in January, so let's carry this. Let's carry this.
I make a motion to, to take a vote on it, on one eighty eight.
Second.
You realize if we vote no, that's it for him.
Yeah, carry it over.
You can carry it over to.
But you know what? There's a motion already, so let's take a vote. Let's take a vote.
It was a motion, a motion by.
A, a second. Let's take a vote.
Our employees deserve us to stand.
Mayor, we're taking a vote. There's no discussion right now. There's a motion and there's a second. Clerk, clerk, please give a call.
I didn't hear the second. I heard Councilman Pharaoh.
Bill Wu, Bill Wu, Councilman Wu seconded.
Okay, councilperson Pharaoh.
Yes.
Sabari.
No.
Oh.
Absolutely not.
De Gregorio.
No.
Aversa.
Ding.
Well, actually, De Gregorio, you're, you're conflicted, because he was like your campaign manager, I think.
It's not conflicted.
Mrs. Suplesa was his campaign manager?
No, 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 the complaining, the complaining party.
Well, I don't know who the complaint. You didn't tell us that.
I'm not sure that that counts as a conflict of interest.
Mario, stop. You, you're, you're not being reasonable.
You, you want our employees to do good work for the town, but you're not willing to.
Oh, stop it. What about Jim Tracy?
Okay, so when, can we finish the vote?
We're not talking about Jim Tracy.
I know, of course not, because he's on the board.
Lizette, let them finish the vote, please.
Okay, councilperson Aversa, you are an abstention, and Councilman Wu?
I'm abstaining.
So he passes. Move on.
Oh, it doesn't pass.
It's no.
It doesn't pass. It's a no.
Correct.
Right, okay, so move on.
All right.
What's the vote?
Uh, one yes, three noes.
No, I, I voted yes.
No, you voted no.
No.
Oh, wait, okay, I voted no.
Yes, three noes, two absensions.
Gloria voted yes.
No, I voted nowhere. Mr. Governor, I voted no.
Okay.
Uh, mayor, just.
I actually know your intentions now, Mario. Glad you're leaving the town.
Angle with Chris, as I said, we're gonna fix New Jersey, too.
Yeah, you're doing a great job with our town. You're doing a bang up job. Yeah, you fixed it all right.
We, we are fixing it.
Yeah, we got dense residential housing for the first time.
Gloria and I, and you guys are a big part of the problem, right?
Great job, governor.
Mario, Governor Mario, if he took you five years, then you can't fix it.
Mayor, regarding the hold harmless, I was reading over the agreement. Yes, there is a fee in there, which gets paid along with the agreement. Just like all the hold harmoses. Okay.
Okay, can we go on?
That's it for resolutions. Uh, committed.
Want to run the rest of the meeting?
There's a line here for ordinances. What is that?
No, it, we just didn't take it out.
We didn't take it out?
There's no ordinance.
There's no ordinances.
Why is it here?
Do you have anything underneath it?
No.
Listen, when the agenda committee does these, they need to actually read what. Listen, when the agenda committee does these, they need to actually read what they're doing.
Okay.
Okay, next, Mario, if you're ready to continue.
So, um, any committee council member report? I have a, a motion to adjourn to the...
Mayor, there's still, there's old business, new business, sign die.
Motion to adjourn.
You have to pick a...
No, I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion.
Yeah, I'm sorry, the reorg is, uh, January, uh, two P M.
We would like to, I would like to make a motion to schedule the reorg for January fourth at six thirty P M.
I second the motion.
Can't, you don't bind the future counsel by doing that.
I'm not, I'm not available on the first, mayor.
You gotta be there.
You don't need to be here on the first. Listen, it's going to be the first.
It's not going to be the first.
I'm not available, mayor.
It's going to be...
Or should I say Governor Mario Krenjek?
It's going to be on the first at two P M, no matter what.
No, it will not be, just like it wasn't when I was gonna be sworn in.
You know what, ma, Governor, uh, Mary Krenjek, you don't have the control until January first.
You don't vote on the future...
There's a motion and a second.
No, 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 this council cannot bind a future counsel for a day.
You know what, ma, Governor or mayor?
It's going to be January first.
You don't have the votes. Sorry. Sorry, you don't have the votes.
Right now, we never do.
You don't have the votes right now.
Does that, can you please take the, take the vote?
Yeah, take the roll call.
And we can fight with Mario afterwards.
No, can, uh, can Mr. Marinello please opine?
Well, I'm not sure of the answer. Never come up in twenty-five years of doing this, but my suspicion is that the current council has a right to determine when the signed die meeting would be.
We have the control.
Let, let me finish. You, you can't, I, I, I believe the mayor is correct, that you cannot determine when the next council is going to meet. However, you can determine when this council is going to meet for the signed die. Thereafter, the mayor can have, the mayor can have the initial meeting of the new council after the date of the signed die meeting up through, I believe, January sixth or seventh is the last.
The first week during the...
Seventh, the seventh is the last day.
Take the vote for the signed die.
Signed die on what date, uh, you specified?
January fourth at six thirty P M.
I second the motion.
Just to be clear, there is no unfinished business right now. So you can vote all you want.
Well, there's a lot of unfinished business.
There's no unfinished business from this agenda. You can vote all you want.
There's gonna be tons of unfinished business.
Can we take a roll call?
Sure. Councilperson Pharaoh?
No.
Sabari?
Yes.
Oh?
Yes.
De Gregorio?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Woo?
No.
So the signed die meeting is January fourth at six thirty P M?
Correct. Now, Mario, if you'd like to set the reorg date, you're more than welcome to at this point.
Can we, um, can we have, um, a motion to adjourn?
You wanna set the reorg date or not?
Well, do you want to set the reorg date or what?
I'll take care of that.
No, it's from the council.
The reorg is...
We're not closing this meeting. We're adjourning to the signed die, which is...
The reorg is from the new council, okay? You guys have to learn to let go. You're done.
You have to learn, you know, your turn is coming.
Okay.
Governor Krenjek.
The turn is coming.
Uh, motion to adjourn.
Um, mayor, I just want...
A motion to adjourn to the signed die, Mario. You have to do it right.
Second.
Uh, I just wanted to speak about the fire department really quick, mayor. Santa...
There's a second on the floor.
Please.
Go ahead.
I want to inform the residents. Uh, Santa around town will be Sunday, December twentieth. Unfortunately, due to the pandemic, Santa won't be coming off the fire truck and meeting the children has, as he's met for all these past years. Um, we ask that the families come out of their front door, of course, socially distanced, wearing masks, waving at the, uh, fire truck when it drives by.
Will we be sending out a notice to the residents to that effect?
Yes, yes, I'm wait, I'm waiting for the fire department to provide something to me. It's just that I wanted to let the, uh, residents on the Zoom here know to, uh, plan for Sunday, December twentieth. The truck will drive by, stand outside, and wave.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
There's a motion and a second to adjourn to sign die.
Uh, who made the motion, please?
Uh, I made the motion to adjourn to sign die.
And who seconded it?
I think I did.
Okay, councilperson Pharaoh? I'm sorry? Sabari?
Yes.
Oh?
Yes.
De Gregorio?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
Okay, so five yeses and one no, okay?
I make a motion to adjourn.
We made a motion to adjourn. We just adjourned to sign die.
Yeah, we, we carried it, actually.
So just, just to be clear...
It's done. The meeting is over. There's nothing else to talk about.
The, stop cutting me off, please.
I am gonna cut you off. The meeting is over.
Councilman, don't cut off the governor.
This agenda has been completed. Thank you. Have a good night, good holiday, everybody. Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah.
Thank you, governor.